Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 12th. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll. Microphone. Oh.
Councilmember Porter.
Thank you.
Here, virtually.
Councilmember Hartzock.
Here.
Councilmember Hardhausen.
I am present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thanks, Krista, and look to a motion to excuse Christina Soltis.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Christina is excused. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for that. With that, we'll move into approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
Not tonight, thanks.
Thanks, Regan. Look for a motion to approve. The agenda is posted.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. We have no public communication tonight, so we'll move into our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Notice to all participants, pursuant to state law, RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five 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 campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the period, meeting is prohibited. And with that, Patty, welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
It's a big crowd. Big crowd. So, dear council members and Mayor Wagner, my name is Patty Campbell, two zero zero two eight Southeast two sixty second Street, Covington. And you may remember that I spoke at this September twelfth meeting about my hope of putting speed bumps in front of our home on Southeast two sixty second Street in Covington. First, I appreciated feeling heard in September. And second, I appreciated the response to my follow-up email from Mayor Wagner, Councilmember Hartzock, Mayor Pro Tem Smith, Councilmember Porter, and City Manager, is it Boldy? Thank you so much. Mayor Wagner and Mayor Pro Tem Smith and City Manager Boldy mentioned that a discussion about speed bumps would appear on your January summit meeting agenda. I'm here today to remind you that I'm still here. I still care. I'm still frustrated about the aggressive drivers on two sixty second Street. I'm also here to share some information on how other cities in our area handle speed bumps. Kent calls it the Residential Traffic Calming Program, or RTCP. While in Maple Valley, it is known as the Neighborhood Traffic Control Program, or NTCP. I have copies of their program information to leave with you. As a matter of fact, there are eighteen cities in King County with active traffic calming programs. Based on what I've read, I'm not sure that speed bumps will ever be a reality for two sixty second Street. But I feel very strongly that whether it's the street in front of my home or the homes that surround me, community members should be able to walk safely through their neighborhoods. And often people don't realize how their slight increase of speed takes a toll on and negatively impacts residential areas. Thank you for seriously considering enacting a traffic calming program in Covington. I'm proud to say this is my home, and I hope that someday soon, I'll once again feel a sense of calm as I work in my yard and navigate through my neighborhood. On a small other note, I'd just like to compliment the street sweeping company that you're currently using. For years, our area felt neglected, and this year, the streets have been swept and cleaned. So thank you for contracting with the company that you are.
Thank you. And we are proceeding with that on our summit in January.
Perfect. And can I pass the papers to you?
We'll just leave it with Krista, and she'll make sure we get them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. And don't give up. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council? Well, all these chairs filled. Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for a public comment towards the end of our meeting. Next, we'll move into approval of the consent agenda, items C one through C thirteen. Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next up is public hearing number one. Business item number one, which is a public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding an ordinance of the city council of the city of Covington, Washington, renewing an ordinance number three dash two zero two three, which adopted and renewed interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelters in response to House Bill twelve twenty, adding new sections to Chapter eighteen point two zero Covington Municipal Code, known as CMC, amending CMC fourteen dot three zero dot zero four zero, CMC eighteen dot two zero dot one three zero five, CMC eighteen dot two five dot zero three zero, and CMC eighteen dot three one dot zero eight zero for a period of six months, adopting findings of fact, providing for severability, requiring a public hearing and setting an effective date. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with state and local law, the public hearing is by declared open. And Selena, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I'm going to do just a really quick presentation. I'm going to go through it fast. Um, is it sharing yet? Okay. Um, so if I, if I'm moving too quickly, let me know. Okay, so the reason that I wanted to do this brief update is that this HB twelve twenty requirements have been around since twenty twenty and then were amended again in twenty twenty one. So this was a requirement of the state legislation for the city to basically adopt our fair share of housing related to moderate low, very low, and extremely low income households, permanent supportive housing, and emergency housing. And there's a lot of information in the original House bill. It touches upon disparate impacts, displacement, exclu- exclusions. The, the main point of that document is kind of a couple-fold, and we'll get into this more next year, but I, I just want to take a little bit and kind of talk about the bill itself. Couple of big things that were in that bill were that, as a city, if you had hotels as a permitted use, you must allow all of these uses in the same zone. Okay, so in Covington, for us, hotels are permitted in our downtown zone and also at Lake Point. While Lake Point has a DA, it still applies to them. The other piece to this is that what, what the state was aiming towards was that the fair share of this type of housing would be absorbed by all cities, right? So historically, a lot of the larger cities have absorbed this type of housing. They've come back and said everyone's going to do their fair share moving forward. So we adopted interim zoning back in twenty twenty, amended it slightly in twenty twenty one. Interim zoning is only good for one year, and year, and after that, it's every six months, it has to be renewed. We are on our sixth renewal of those interim zoning regulations. So what you have before you tonight has not changed from what we've seen before. But I think we're starting to raise this topic a little bit higher on our work plan moving into twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. So this is a little bit of where we are in the process. So once this information came out, then the Department of Commerce got to work. And this also goes along with our comprehensive plan and the work we're doing with our housing element. And we're going to talk more about this in February, so we can deep dive into it further. But ultimately, cities required to do a housing needs assessment, which we've completed. We'll be presenting the final facts to you, the council, in February. We have to do a land capacity analysis that basically says, if you have the growth, do you have the ability to accommodate that growth? You have to do an adequate provisions analysis. This is what we're doing right now in the planning area as part of the comp plan. We'll be presenting this information to the commission in January, which basically says, do your codes and policies prohibit your ability to meet these requirements, right? So oftentimes, we use zoning to encourage and sometimes discourage certain things. Now, they're going to make sure that those provisions don't exist to make it difficult, right? So that's kind of something we're going to be navigating. And then as far as the HB twelve twenty itself, it's going to be my recommendation to the council that the planning commission start to study this next year. And we've allocated some of the legislative money in the budget towards this effort to just kind of once and for all, get this in our code so that we're not having to bring back an amendment every six months and work in an interim zoning situation. As of the date of this blue sheet just last week, Commerce announced that they're going to do a model ordinance related to HB twelve twenty, which we don't think we're going to have any model ordinance until about twenty twenty five. So we may end up doing this in two parts, getting something in the book that meets the adequate provisions and the basis of the law. And then if we need to, we'll amend it in the future. That's just more of an FYI. You're going to see this from me a lot and the planning commission a lot this year. So part of that land capacity analysis is that, and that absorption of growth is within these various categories. So the city has a growth allocation of about forty-three hundred and some change that we're anticipating growing in the next twenty years. That's what we were planning for. And within that planning amount of housing units, they're broken down by these individual income brackets. This, these income brackets were completed a couple of years ago by Commerce in King County and then handed out to the cities. So you can, you can see there where Covington's going to have to create codes and policies to start to fulfill those requirements within those different housing income brackets. And again, we can dive into this more, but you'll, you've, you've seen me flash this a few times because it really is the basis of what our land use and our housing goals and policies are going to be moving forward, and then that will parlay into our codes. This was just a really quick, so we completed our land capacity analysis, which I had mentioned was if we say we're going to accommodate that number of growth, can we in fact, do we in fact have the land to do that? This chart here shows we do. So that's really good news, so we don't have to do any upzones or rezones within Covington. We can work within the existing zoning, but things we are going to have to look, look at or form and function within those zones. So those are like bulk requirements, which we consider your setbacks, heights, num- density, there's different kind of bulk requirements that we will have to evaluate throughout this, the next eighteen months. But it's good news we need that. So a couple of things that we will be looking at as part of the planning commission diving into this in the future, but not presented to you tonight. We are keeping it the same tonight as we have the last six adoption cycles. But we do know from the adequacy provision evaluation of our HB twelve twenty interim zoning that we do have three requirements that are prohibitive in us meeting our requirements, and that is we have a spacing requirement between the facilities. So right now, we have about a quarter mile that you can't have a one facility within a quarter mile of another facility. Given the size of our downtown, that's very prohibitive. We can't meet that based on size of our downtown. A quarter mile is a lot when your downtown's only a few miles, few square miles. We have a capacity on the number of units allowed. We have to need eight hundred and thirty-some odd beds, so that's something we're going to have to look at. Well, those are really the top two, and then there's just some other provisions in there that are not very equitable that were great when this started out, but as we've evolved and learned from other cities and the equity aspect of it, we're learning now that the state is like, if you're not willing to do, if you're not willing to have that condition for a multifamily unit, why are you requiring that provision for a multifamily unit at a lower income bracket? So they're really going to be looking at the equity aspect of that in evaluating our code. So that, those are just kind of heads up, nothing we need to do today to make that change, but I just want to, you know, put that into the, the conversation about HB twelve twenty, mostly because we've just been in this renewal aspect of it, and we're going to start diving into it into twenty twenty four. So as far as tonight, I don't know what happened. Okay. Um, we are renewing as, as we have been every six months. There are no changes to what's in front of you tonight. We are suggesting that the planning commission start working on this in twenty twenty four to at least get this in our zoning code at a basis where we're not bringing it back to you every six months. And otherwise, tonight is just the public hearing and council consideration on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Selena. The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up to the microphone, give your name, and state whether you're a resident of the city of Covington or not. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council concerning this topic? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand or approach the podium, I declare this public hearing closed. And does council have any questions for Selena on this? All right, seeing nobody raise their hands. Oh, there's council member Beth Porter. Before us, we have the potential to approve an ordinance that renews ordinance zero three dash two zero two two interim zoning regulations related to House Bill twelve twenty requirements for permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelters for a period of six months. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sounds like there's still some work to do, and this will provide that additional time that we need.
Thank you, Beth. Jennifer, would you like to speak to your second?
Just to add that, I appreciate the additional information this time around and that there is a potential light at the end of the tunnel in about three more of these renewals. So thank you very much. This is great.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve an ordinance that renews ordinance zero three dash two zero two two interim zoning regulations related to House Bill twelve twenty requirements for permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelters for a period of six months. All those in favor state aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ordinance passes. Thank you. We'll move into new business. Item number two, consider an ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-four operating and capital budget. Casey.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, we're presenting our two thousand twenty-four operating and capital budget. This has been through several public hearings, worked on by staff, and deliberated on by council for the last several months. One item I wanted to note that is not included in the budget before you is the increased revenue from the utility tax that was recently adopted by council. There was a referendum period that had to be in place following that adoption, and so once that that runs, which is now completed that period, we can then add that back into the budget. So we'll do that through a budget amendment in twenty twenty four. So that you'll see that reflected through a budget amendment. So based on direction from council, the attached proposed ordinance represents the final known budget that the council directed for adoption tonight. If you have any questions, we're happy to address those.
Okay, council, any questions? Please raise your hand. Right, before us is the to pass an ordinance in substantial form. Is that attached here too, adopting the two thousand twenty-four operating and capital budget? Your motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
We have a good budget this year. There's lots of things that I, I think we all wish were in it. There's lots of things that we all wish we could do. There's, I'm sure we all could have thought of a couple ways to move money around, so it's, we all have our favorite projects that we wish would get done next year, but they're all going to get done eventually, so we're getting it done. And kudos to the team for working through it and answering all of our weird and obscure questions that we may have had during the budget workshops.
Thank you, Joe. Debbie, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. Well, first, I'd like to thank the finance team of, well, Regan, every, your whole team had to participate in the, in the budget process, but you made it easy for us by providing all of the information upfront in a way we could understand, appreciated the day that we had to work on it. I think we've done a good job of having a balanced budget and look forward to meeting those goals in twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass an ordinance in substantial form. Is that attached here too? Adopting the two thousand twenty-four operating and capital budget. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. That concludes all of our new business. Looking at future agenda items, our next meeting is not until January ninth. We have interviews at six forty with our meeting starting at seven. Does council have anything they'd like to see on a future agenda in twenty twenty four? All right, with that, we will move into council staff comments. Start with Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. On Saturday, we had shop with a cop at our Walmart. We had about a hundred eighty children go through and get the experience of shopping with a police officer for a Christmas present. I know the two families I took through was a privilege to do so. We really want to thank the Rotarys, both Maple Valley and Covington, for providing the funding for that, and thank you to those that should have been helped out. That's all I have. Wish you all Merry Christmas and a Happy Year.
Thanks, Adam. Ethan?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. One, I wanted to share that we do have a, a couple online community surveys happening right now. One is for an off-leash dog area slash park, so we're starting to collect some community input for that. And the other one is for the Jenkins Creek Trail Project that is starting to kick off. We're, of course, promoting these through a variety of channels. I think they were in the rec guide, they're in the e-newsletter that went out using social media and whatnot. So certainly feel free to share those and spread the word on those, those surveys. And then also one holiday or celebration that doesn't get quite so much recognition this time of year is the Seahorse Birthday, which is tomorrow. So we'll be celebrating that up at the Aquatic Center. I think they have a birthday hat for the Seahorse. And then they'll be handing out some candy treats for kids at public swims and probably for people that can't get there, we'll do a Facebook post. So it should be fun. That's it.
What time are you, is the celebration running the entire hours of the Aquatic Center or a certain time?
It's kind of just ongoing throughout the day. There's not really a specific event. I think public swims are when they're handing out the, the candy treats. I don't know when those are off the top of my head.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn?
Thanks, Mayor and council. Nothing other than just wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Selena?
I just wish you all a great holiday season, and thank you for tonight.
Thank you, Selena. Casey?
Nothing for me tonight, but happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm just one thing for me. We have an executive session tonight under RCW forty-two thirty one one zero sub one, sub little g to review the performance of a public employee. And other than that, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and I have no further comment. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mark. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we're excited that the Valley Cities Mobile Mental Health Band is now, as of last week, operating in Covington, so every other Monday. So we're excited about that, and hopefully we'll continue to see that grow and provide those services in Covington. Also wanted to bring out publicly the work that our clean team has, has done and, and the engagement that that's received throughout the community. A total of a hundred and seventy-six volunteers recruited for litter pickups throughout the year. They participated or added two hundred and eighty-nine service hours of litter cleanup and a total of two hundred and forty-nine bags of garbage, garbage collected. So nice to see that ripple effect go throughout the community. And last but not least, Santa Claus will be visiting the library, Covington Library, tomorrow.
Okay.
A jolly fellow I hear. So and then this is our last meeting of the year, and it's always just amazing to me how quick the years seem to go by. And I can't let it pass without showing just my immense appreciation for this team. And by team, I mean the city council and this leadership team. You all really are exceptional, and we're really, really lucky and fortunate to be able to work together. So thank you. Merry Christmas, and thank you for a wonderful year.
Thank you, Regan. Krista?
I will echo that. It's been a wonderful year, and I look forward to our oaths of office for our four newly elected council members later this month. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Beth?
Thank you. I, I just have to say that tree lighting, you know, it looks, it seems like it gets better and better every year in that display. I, I was at Fred Meyer for a few minutes today, and I actually heard the music, and I, I thought I'd never heard the music before. So it's very festive. I appreciate all the work staff put into the, the tree element itself and also the event. I didn't get to stay for the whole thing, but I, the energy, the positive vibes, it was just, you could tell there was a sense of community brewing right there, and it was, it was very special, I felt. So thank you for that. And also, I didn't, I did want to let you all know that on the Joint Recommendations Committee for the SCA Caucus, we did ask the JRC to put in an item on their legislative agenda that they'll be taking to advocate. The JRC is focused on affordable housing, equity in housing. And one of the pieces that we asked them to put in was to help provide tools for cities where transit, because everything is trying to focus around transit density, and that's where the housing would go. And a lot of us on the rural areas don't have that density. I'm sorry, we don't have, we don't have a very good transit system that would be considered high density, so we often don't get the tools to help meet those affordable housing needs. So we want to make sure that that gets, that message continues to get taken to our legislators so that cities have an opportunity to, to receive some support to make it more equitable, to help, help bring affordable housing to some of those areas. So that was just kind of a, that's a probably a long-winded version of saying it, and if anyone wants the specific language, I can, I can share that agenda with, with you all if you want to ask Krista for it, and I can give it to her. But anyway, that's the, the bigger thing we had our last meeting of the year. So yeah, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday, however you celebrate. Enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I echo Beth's statements about the tree lighting. That was great. I can't even count how many I've been to now, and it just gets better and better, and the ability of the city to actually manage it, do it, is just, I think it's going better and without a hitch. So, you know, pass it along to your team. The RFA had, Puget Sound RFA had its meeting last Tuesday, and basically the main item of business was the retirement of two of the board members, Les Thomas and Alan Barrie, both retired, and they're stepping down, so we'll have new board members coming on. In fact, there's going to be a significant turnover. So a three new, or two new electeds, Maple Valley, or excuse me, Toquilla is going to have three new representatives, so they'll be appointed because they're part of the RFA now, and then Maple Valley's current rep has just been elected to their city council, so he's stepping down, and they'll be appointing a new person too. So it's going to be a lot of change on the RFA in the, in the new year. So it's kind of exciting, but also kind of feels like all these people have graduated, and you're still in school, and it's like, hmm, okay, where's everybody going? So anyway, that's it. So happy holidays, Dawn.
Thank you, Sean. Debbie?
Thank you. You remember that Thank you. Um, you remember that we recently voted to give some of our affordable housing funds to Skip? And they're um providing that money to a number, I believe, between five and seven different housing groups, one of which was um Mercy Housing in Kent. And I was excited, a couple of days ago, I read that um Mackenzie Scott had um Jeff Bezos, ex-wife, a multi-billioner, um had four areas of um passion around uh where she wanted to give her money to, and one of which is affordable housing. And um she chose Mercy Housing to give seventy five million dollars last year, and that might include additional money next year. Now, that's on a nationwide. I don't know how many housing groups they have, but it's just nice to know that a, a place that Skip chose and we chose to offer money up to is also getting that national level of recognition. And then I also wanted to tell you that um a number of local food banks are gonna be closed over Christmas, and the storehouse is actually closing the week between Christmas and New Year's as well. And during that time, um we have staff that offered to come in and work because the Federal Way, Maple Valley, and um Auburn Food Banks are closing during that same time period and will not pick up their grocery routes that we all get our food from. And so they asked the storehouse if anyone would be willing to go and pick up their routes. So each of those food banks has between five and seven stores that they pick up from three times a week. And so all of that food is gonna come into the storehouse. Um, our folks are gonna be working very, very hard during that time period to take that food in and get it processed, and then Kent can come in and get what they need from us. Um, and so can Maple Valley Food Bank, but it's, it's kind of a, a first time. Um, this happened to a smaller degree during Thanksgiving, and um it took a lot of volunteers to get the work done. But if we didn't do this, that food would get thrown out, and none of us could handle doing that. So we're all gonna go in and um if anybody has some extra time between Christmas and New Year's, you can reach out to me or to Jennifer Liggett, and we can tell you what days we have needs for, but that's it. And I wanna wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a safe and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Jennifer?
Um, I agree. The tree looks better and better. I really like the rainbow lights on the little trees around it. It's so so cute. It's like a ah, what do you call it? Not a happy accident, because it wasn't an accident. What happened to our previous trees, but um it, it has worked out. It looks great.
Yeah.
Um, and I was sorry to miss the lighting. It was my husband's fiftieth actually on the second, so that's, that's a big deal. Um, I wanted to let everyone know that based on precedent of council's previous support of um this funding memo that RIA nine sends to our federal legislation to support Fish Passage um for Howard Handsome Dam Project that um Mayor Wagner did sign that, and it, it, it is off. We've signed it two or three times, at least in my recollection, maybe even more than that. So I wanted to give everyone a heads up. And um happy, happy, happy holidays. I hope everyone has um fun and uh a safe, warm, festive season.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe?
Um, so the tree does look great. I was at Safeway just before the meeting, and I heard the music from the Safeway parking lot. I was, my first thought was someone was singing in the parking lot, because I didn't realize we had the speakers working over there. As I got close, as I was driving away and got closer, I was like, oh, it's the tree. All right, that's awesome. Um, we have the SCA Board elections tomorrow at, from five to six thirty. Then I get a half an hour break before PIC, uh so I will be all online, so it's gonna be a fun couple hours just sitting there staring at my computer with my family thinking I'm weird uh or weirder. But if anyone is still interested in serving on any of the regional boards, uh I know there will be an affordable, uh a spot open on the affordable housing as an alternate in the next couple of months. So keep that in mind. Uh, the Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force has absolutely zero alternates. So if you would like to get onto that committee, um I did serve on that one, so if you want to, you can talk to me about it. Growth Management Planning has two alternate spots. King County Flood Control District has an alternate. There's, there's a bunch of alternates, but we will be voting on the list that's already there. And you should all be getting emails still from SCA talking about the alternate openings. Uh, there's also, I'll just read this one. Um, the PIC Chair and Vice Chair will be voting on new ones next uh tomorrow night. The PIC Nominating Committee met last week and reviewed the nominees for twenty twenty four PIC Chair and Vice Chair. They recommend the election of Councilmember Chris Roberts from Shoreline as the PIC Chair, and Councilmember Joseph Simomo Junior of Covington as the Vice Chair. So it's the one little thing I'm gonna count myself on is that, yeah, yeah, I got that one. Uh, other than that, um it's the last meeting I'm gonna have for the year. So should be hopefully short, but uh you all know, you've all met people who are on the PIC, and they like to talk. So there's gonna be a possibility of that not being as short as I'd like it to be. And uh other than that, that's all I've got right now. I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Stay safe. Go get, go into the snow and throw some snowballs. Have all the fun.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I agree, the tree lighting was outstanding. Um, and the attendance was a lot better than it was in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. It was a little lonely out there, but um each year gets better and better. And my kudos to the entire staff and everybody that put it on. And I s, I know you have more than who are out there, Don, but it, I swear, it felt like the entire Public Works Team was out there running everything and making sure it worked perfect. So thank you. Shop with a Cop was awesome. Um, thank you to all the officers that were there. Thank you to Covington and Maple Valley Rotary. Uh, the uh Explorers were there. Kent Lake Photography Class was out there taking pictures, and there was numerous other groups. Um, and just, it amazes me each year how well it runs, and um thanks for, for doing that. SCA, um, the dinner that we had last week uh was very, very good. Um, several electeds were retiring um from being an elected. So we said goodbye, and there was uh several SC emeritus who are electeds in the commu, in the south, uh King County area who went above and beyond in their tenures and elected. So five people were honored for that this year. And then uh Joe, thank you for being the voting representative for the board. We have several good members in King County who are running for the SCA Board. SCA is Sound Cities Association, which is thirty eight cities of King County and one million voices where we join together to talk. And speaking of PIC, Joe, congratulations. I, I know I'm being, the vote hasn't taken.
Yep.
But I know that you're going to do a very good job as the, not only the Vice Chair, but in several years as the Chair of PIC. I have full confidence in you, and I know that you can do the right thing.
Thank you.
And besides, we need to have Covington continue to be on the boards. So thank you.
Yes.
So thank you for stepping up and doing that. And I just wanna say thank you to the leadership team, the entire staff, um council. It has been an honor and a privilege to be your mayor this year um and to work with everybody and all the hard work that everybody chips in to do. And also to all of our community, our residents, those of you who show up to speak. I mean, we've had meetings where we've had two people show up to speak, but everybody is respectful, everybody comes, and even if you can't make it to a council meeting, running into people um even at our favorite meeting place of Costco or Fred Meyer, wherever it may be. Um, and each, everybody takes time to, to listen to concerns and what's going on in our community and beyond. So thank you to everybody for that. With, and then uh happy holidays, Merry Christmas to each and every one of you, and thank you again. We'll move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating virtually, click the raise hand button in Zoom. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants you permission to speak, press unmute if participating virtually, or dial star six to unmute if participating by phone. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address counsel? Is there anybody online wishing to address counsel? Please raise your hand. With that, we will move into, that will close our public comment period. We will move into executive session to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW forty two dot three zero dot one one zero subsection one, subsection little G for approximately one hour, meaning at eight forty five, we will return, at which time no further action will be taken. With that, thank you all very much, and happy holidays, and we will be back in an hour. Good evening, everybody. We are back from our executive session where no action was taken. No further action is being taken tonight. This meeting is adjourned, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.